He has the surveys done, but he doesn't have a, here's, here comes Andy.
Andy, say how you're doing?
Good, you?
What, what should I say?
Right there is good.
None of those two people are coming tonight, so the table's all yours.
Oh, they're not coming?
No, that's for council. So you're saying, okay.
I have something for you. I left it in my office.
Thank you.
I'll be right back.
Things are better already.
Good. We'll find the relevant things.
Yeah.
Well, some things got to wait outdoor, like we gotta do the, the spring thing, but uh.
Yeah.
Hopefully in about two weeks, we should be completely done with the renovation.
Yeah, that's great.
Uh, we just had some uh touch-ups and all that stuff, which before we take us to a little part of February.
Yeah. How's occupancy these days?
Right now, it's very good.
Good.
Very small since we were here in April, but uh.
Yeah.
It's picked up significantly over the last five, six weeks.
Yeah. I'm sure you're tired of this question, but do you have any active COVID cases there right now, or are you guys calling?
Well.
Well, this is John.
The only active ones we made now are the ones that we are admitting. And we're admitting them into a.
Well, we do that every time.
We.
But right on the front of the agenda, it says in person for members.
But there's.
I zoom teleconference for the public.
They're kind of from the hospital. They're, they're, they've already been stabilized, so.
Yeah, right. They're kind of coming here to.
Right, they're not, not a new. And we test twice a week.
Can you?
What we can do, thank you.
Okay. Did you guys get your shots yet?
I sent you a PDF.
Well, I sent this out on Thursday.
First round, we did two weeks ago. We're doing a second round. I need to actually.
Very good.
Yeah.
Most of your employees take you, or do you have a few that have been more? More, more than a few probably.
More than a few.
Yeah, that's amazing to me.
Jog County.
I guess that's not amazing to me, but man, a minute I'm ready, I'm taking it.
Probably uh eighty percent of our.
Okay, I apologize.
Oh, it took care of it, didn't it?
Did take it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if we don't have a form, then uh, you know, we'll have to push it to next.
Staff wouldn't want it working around, you know, but.
No, they, they've been working around it now. They're, they're not.
Well, we're getting started in two minutes, so.
About their.
I don't think you should worry about it.
Yeah.
No one else is behind, so.
In a positive way, I should say, in a careful way, I should say, hopeful.
Yeah.
I mean, what we don't.
Chin, chin time.
Probably different than what we do.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Four or five months.
I know.
Yeah. Because we thought it was no. Yeah. Remember, my friend of mine was in the hospital with COVID out in Indiana, and he was in there for like three weeks. I was CD, never a ventilator, but he's in there a long time, and doctors told him like four, or they thought they lost him twice, but he came back.
He thought it was a Zoom meeting.
This was like in August, I want to say. They told him, I said, you.
I mean, he says it right on the agenda.
But you know, they learned how to prolong it.
I send the instructions out, just in case things change, you know?
I mean, when we, when we went through it in April, they call, or. Love the SODH. They, they put their hands up. Whatever you do, sounds good to us.
Yeah.
So.
How you doing, Tom?
Yeah, we're in the.
Good job.
Dirt not moving on.
Happy New Year to you.
Happy New Year. Is Lindbergh come tonight?
No.
He's not, he's out.
Have you heard from Carissa?
I thought it was a Zoom meeting. What about?
I haven't heard from Carissa, so.
Is uh Lindbergh Zooming in, or he's just not here?
No, no.
So because they commercially got a council with two of you, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we don't.
Say again?
With two of us, and we vote to take things to council.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, you guys all ready now, or do I need to record?
Yeah, make sure on your talking that you turn your mic on, you talk into it, because you're recording it on.
I don't need you to mic.
Don't worry, I haven't pushed record yet. We'll get all set up here.
It's already recording.
Ah. All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the planning and zoning meeting to order, uh, January twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, Leslie, would you take the role, please?
Karlik?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Lindbergh? Dietrich? Schaefer?
All right, do we have any additions or deletions this evening?
No, Mr. Chairman.
I do have an addition, John. I got a call from Chuck White regarding his relocation of Jennifers and. The offices in the back.
Okay.
So I want to talk about that at some point tonight.
That'd be fine.
All right, I'll make that number two on our new business. Uh, there's nothing on our old business. We have no public hearings tonight. Uh, we have the minutes from December eighth. Not a lot to it, but they looked good to me. Anybody else want to make a motion if you've read them?
No move.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I'll have to state I wasn't present.
Very good. All right, new business, number one, proposed lots, uh consolidation for Briar Hill, approximate four point two acre site at one four eight oh oh through one four eight two oh, North State Avenue comprised of parcels. Nineteen dash oh five five two hundred, oh five five zero zero zero, oh five five four hundred, and oh one two five hundred. John?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I've been, uh, as you all know, we worked real close with Andy, um, on Briar Hill's, um. New addition across the street from this site. And uh. So uh, I've worked with Andy to look at a couple different concepts, um, um, probably within the last year and a half. Uh, we looked at a couple renditions and uh, um, comes a time now where, you know, he wants to assemble the properties together so that he can take it to the next, uh, level of development for the project.
All right, and uh, this is all gone through what processes so far, as far as the county and everything else?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last part of it.
Where are we at on the processes as far as going to the county and submitting and doing all that?
There hasn't been any submittals that I know, uh, to the, to the county, uh.
Just here to make sure we're okay with it.
We don't have a drawing as of yet, so he's here for, um, wh- what I would think the motion would be, uh, it would be, uh, subject to your review, uh, with the conditions that the village engineer approve it, as well as the county, um, so.
Andy, anything you want to say?
Um. I figure the first steps was lot consolidation. Our desire, uh, our ultimate desire is to build some. A, a cluster of independent living cottages, making a tiny little village in there, if you will, and. Uh, a twenty-eight bed memory care unit in the back. So our goal right now is lot consolidation, the four properties mentioned. We would like to start, um. Probably end of February, uh renovating the three homes that we have on there, gutting two of them out, Bond Tragger's and the corner lot. And then refacing all three of them. So, and converting them, well, one already is an independent living cottage, but converting the other two into independent living cottages. And then we would, uh, in February, I hope to have a site plan to submit. Uh, for February's meeting to show the construction of one or two of the beginning of our independent living cottages. Independent living cottages would be like a duplex ranch style look that are approximately. Thirteen hundred square foot. That would have an attached garage, two bedroom, kitchen, things like that, and it'd be independent living with services for the senior population.
So all the existing buildings up front, those would all remain, but you said you're gonna reface them, like?
Well, two of them get gutted and renovated. And the other, well, all three of them get, uh, finished, refi- exterior refinished.
Yeah, exciting and.
Lighting, some stonework like we did next door, um, landscape, things like that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, totally done, yeah. We got a little bit more yet to do, but then we're, hopefully it'll be done. Thank you.
So John, what's the current zoning on those parcels? What's the current zoning?
General commercial.
How does that work with residential type development for density and everything else? Dave, can you help on that? We can treat this like a PUD?
Yeah, I mean, we could treat it that way. We could also treat it as a visual use, if you want to do that. There are different approaches you can take with it.
So.
You might be rezoning.
I just say I'm concerned about density, concerned about density. You know, if he wants to develop the property, it can't be, you know, eighty-five houses per acre.
Oh, no, no, we're talking like sixteen units total.
I just wonder if we could maybe do, um, perhaps a residential PUD type scenario. That might be a better fit.
I think you have to to play it by ears of.
Andy, what do you say at thirteen hundred square feet on a duplex, is that for both units?
Yeah.
Each, each unit would be thirteen hundred square.
Because otherwise, any two.
Under those square foot requirement?
I, I will have a site plan for you for the next, uh, February meeting.
So with the process of rezoning the property, well, how does that fit in the, the flow of?
Uh, that, I mean, that obviously needs to go to council, but, um, you probably need to get that, get that rolling pretty quickly. Uh, in terms of timing, I mean, we could do some of the stuff, uh, uh, at the same time before you actually break down on, on something that, uh. What's, what's your, what's your timing on actually starting?
Uh, sometime in the spring.
Hmm, plenty of time.
What is it zoned across the street?
When I say sometime in the spring, we're, as of right now, we're planning on, uh. Doing one or two actual new units. We're starting to renow the existing, uh. We realistically end of February, early March, and we'd like to construct one or two of the duplexes in the late spring. And see how they go.
Issue is we need to have all that done regardless of if he builds one, two, or ten, right?
Well, you, you, you don't need to have rezoning to do anything with the existing.
No, but if he wants to build a couple of new units, we've got to have that done, so I'm in the processes.
Rezoning done before you can break down on it.
I don't want to make it sound difficult, just want to make sure we, we know what to do.
Right, right, right.
Well, it's general commercial across the street Leslie just said where the nursing home is, does that make sense currently then?
The conditional use? The nursing home is, that's what I'm saying, but now we're going to two family, you know, duplexes. It's like, it's a little different.
Yeah.
It's not a facility. It's not a facility. It's a house.
I just didn't know if we should rezone that at the same time and group it all, or you know what, so I just want to make sure.
We, we got rid of the conditional use for a lot of reasons. We changed the nursing home. But she's, the general commercial, so. We do avoid the conditional use, but we got, we have people that have, that have all the points here.
Okay. Well, and to rezone these parcels, what does that entail? We suggested to council, you have to have public hearings for that. And then council.
And, and Andy, what's the, which of the one parcels that, that is not, is that particular parcel as well?
Uh, actually, I think that's a little strip that belongs to the village.
It's a right of way, I think.
It's a right of way.
Oh, okay, so.
Sure. You know, John, you listed six parcels on this sheet. And you circled four of the six. Is that right? Where's the other two?
That was the application. There's only four.
Where's the other two parcel? I couldn't find them on this map.
There's only four that he's consolidating.
I know, but Pier Street Properties owns two more. Where the heck are they?
Oh, one's on Button Street and one's on Pier Street.
Okay, they're across the street.
So it wouldn't be on this map then?
Yeah, I, I just couldn't find them. I didn't, I thought I seen them. I'm not sure that's legal, is it? Call them Pier Street when they're not on Pier Street?
Pier Street Properties on Button.
In the vicinity of Pier Street.
Well, yeah, and uh, I know me, I don't have any issue with the lot consolidation, obviously, because, uh, you know, fixing up the homes, building new, I mean, you've taken this whole corner over here and made it more pretty, beautiful, and it'll just be another continuation of that.
So in February, what do you, what do you think you're gonna do when you come here? Gonna show us the site plan?
Yeah.
Build out?
Yes, what would you like? I can.
I just, I think we need to see it built out. I don't want to see you get two, and we say, you think you're gonna have ten, you're gonna have eight, you know?
No, no, I would show you a full site.
And how about the, the exterior remodels? You gonna show us anything on that? You said stonework, so everybody got excited. It'd be nice to see it, I think. Help sell the rest of it to me.
I can do that.
We'll need to plan, John, we'll need to be prepared to do a rezoning renovation at, at that point to get that to council.
Our PUD is, is the way to go. It gives a flexibility.
We need to make sure that what he's planning still fits with an R P U D, uh, without variances or without any significant variances, so we can get it done. Uh, because then council has to consider it. There has to be public hearing.
Is a public hearing a council?
Yeah. The planning commission can waive a public hearing, but, but council has to have a public hearing, and so you've got timing issues.
So council, council is two days after this, next month. Can we do a public hearing, that council meeting?
No, 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 you have to have thirty days notice. So council has, has to have the first, first meeting, and then thirty days notice and second meeting, and then you got, uh, thirty days to report to become a president.
I think next month's council is on like the eighth or something.
That's a good timeframe. Sixty days? He's not gonna do it until April anyhow.
It's the eleventh next month, council, so that's not even thirty days from today, or it's almost exactly, so.
And then.
Like to move forward with this, but we're not in a rush.
We can't compress it past the legal requirements. I mean, it's, and we'll do what we can to compress it, but.
I could start the rehab.
Yeah, yeah, that's no problem.
Yeah, I was wondering if we could do some other site preparation too.
Right, right.
You could pull in their site work and clear it.
Yeah, as, as, as long as any site work is not inconsistent with the, with G C zoning, he's fine. It's just, it's just the duplex piece of it.
Right.
The new duplex piece of it has to be, uh, has to be rezoned, but anything else we can, uh, treat as pre-existing.
It was.
We just want that site, why not, so we know what we've got and, yeah, set that spacing, putting the opening, all that sort of thing.
Right, they're gonna have employees in the twenty-eight memory bed thing, parking for all of that. Because originally, you were gonna have some parking over here, but now that you've put in that parking, you don't need this anymore? Okay.
Well, planned a couple years ago that had a senior center incorporated into it, and that, that's all gone away?
Oh, we're pretty much using, that's our base model. It's, it's being tweaked, it's been tweaked a couple of times. So we probably wouldn't put a senior, well, I don't know, we, we're, we would like to put some type of a clubhouse on there for the seniors that are living in the homes. That would have a place for eating, exercise, and lounge.
That might.
Right.
That's down the road, so.
Yeah.
I got, John, the, uh, site plan in a couple of weeks. Do you think it?
Okay, at the next P and Z meeting. Is that good?
Yeah, yeah. I'm just wondering if, after you look at it, you might say, well, you better just keep it general commercial, but.
I think a new duplex is out, it's a general commercial.
Okay.
Build a duplex could be sold as a residence at some point. I mean, it really can't be in a G C.
For what purposes, Tom?
Maybe when we see his plan, we'll make that determination.
But, but if we consolidate the whole thing tonight.
Then it's gonna have to be one thing.
And we have to split it again.
Yeah.
Well, if we were to do that, we probably would split it completely different.
Yeah, then four long slices.
See, they have to consolidate it anyways, to have a kind of a clean slate and reconfigure.
Lots now are like pencil, uh, you know, design, so it's difficult to build just on one lot because they're so narrow.
And they're free off of Terror Creek, it's another block, so. That has to be a special constipation.
Okay.
And having trucks over shut down, down the road.
Yeah, they're in O-DOT. Is there a, do you think there's much need for ambulances over that way with the memory care unit? Like, is that a, you know, like over here, it's a daily occurrence, one or two, is that?
It's the, no, it wouldn't, I mean, would we have a need for an ambulance? Yes. Would it be like next door? Wouldn't, it wouldn't even be half, wouldn't it be, even be a?
Occasional. Okay. Because that, to me, would almost make more sense coming in and off of Terror Creek, you know, if we did go that route. Well, so what do we need to do tonight then?
Nothing, right?
If, if, if we're gonna consolidate, unless you think you're, you might not want to consolidate everything. And, and leave something open.
Well, like Dave just said, though, if he's gonna, you know, it's four narrow slices right now. If they end up cutting it this way, it almost needs to become one and then cut in half later. Like consolidate it all into one now, and then if he wants to portion it off later, split it?
It's not, it's running the wrong way.
Right.
So, I guess, so maybe simply some just consolidate now and then, you know, later if you lose something else, and that won't be down the road if you were more, like, maybe consolidate it now.
That's what I would think. I. Weird little slice that acronyms right there. There's nothing on that land, right? That little square that they have that's landlocked to the trail?
We've talked to them, I think Leslie maybe talked to them, or we talked to them about selling, but.
They don't want to sell it?
They said it's all, it's selling, leaving, uh.
Hmm.
I think everything they have is leverage to the max.
Yeah.
So they can't sell, they can't sell one tire off the car, or they repel the car.
Yeah. That's crazy, because that land's just gonna sit there for decades, centuries. It's just nothing to do with it. It's one point seven acres, though. All right, well, I would make a motion then to approve the, uh, lot consolidation of these four lots.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, you now have one lot. Yeah, there you go. All right, well, good luck.
Nice seeing you. Happy New Year.
All right, uh, zoning inspector's report. John, anything particular to point out on there?
I think the mayor had something he wanted.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. New business number two, Chuck White and relocations. This is over by the, uh, electronic place?
Right.
Okay.
So I think if I'm, if I remember correctly, I was informed correctly, Georgios and they moved. From one location to the other. We didn't charge them a new permit fee because it was the existing business in the village. Is that correct?
We charged them an occupancy permit, but we didn't charge them for their signed relocation.
Okay. So I guess, here's, here's, I'll tell you what the two issues are, and we can talk about how to fix it or don't fix it. He has offices in the back that have temporary, here's an example, a guy from Glen Valley, he's working from home, he's driving his family crazy. He wants to try an office for a month and see if it works out financially and logistically and blah blah. So he's gonna pay an occupancy permit. Next month, that guy's out and Scott moves in because he's doing the same thing, and he's gonna get hit with another occupancy permit. It's like, so he gets a hundred fifty bucks a month rent out of it, and you're parting him two hundred bucks for a permit. It's like, it just doesn't work.
What if we just said the space was, uh, open business space?
I say, I think once you get the permit, it should apply to that space, not to the, the person.
Well, I mean, the use of the space can be shared business space, kind of like, um. They have it in Solon, it's called Cube Space, and it's just when you, you have a small business, you're a single, um, sole proprietor, you can go in there, use it for X many hours a week. And then, you know, another business is in there X many hours a week. So it's kind of like, you don't have to redo it, you'd only have one fire inspection, um, until the use itself changes.
That's, that's, that's what I'm saying, we should put it in so the space is covered. People move in out of it, the space is the space.
I don't see why we couldn't just do that under the application, have Chuck fill it out, do one for a business office space, just general business office space in that unit, have the inspection done, and then just run it under that. Tom, am I wrong?
That work for you? Right.
If it's an office use.
If it turns into a meat locker, it's gotta pay again, right?
Retail or.
Right. Right. Okay, I'll take care of that. So he's coming down tomorrow to see you with his permits thing. So the other thing is Jennifers, who's gonna move from here to there.
Wait, move from her place?
Place here, out the, by Radua Act, what are the, uh, what was in there? The bow shop, the bow shop.
Okay.
Doggo Bow. So he said he looked on a sheet of seven hundred bucks for her to go from there to there.
We can waive some of those. I haven't even talked to anybody.
He just looked at the sheet and he said, how does this work? And I said, well, I think we waived it for Georgios, and I was in there, I thought we waived the occupancy, because they moved from up there to down there.
I did do it for across the street, so if you want to have one of them give me a call, we can go through it, and I can see what really needs to be done.
He's gonna come down tomorrow, the property owner, so work through it with him.
Okay.
Uh. A new business to me in town is, is one thing. A relocation is a different thing. It's not like they shouldn't be treated as a new business, they're just, for reasons, they want to stay in Middlefield, which is, we want. And the space works better for them, so it's, we should work with them, so. You, do you hear that, John?
It sounds good. Yeah, you mentioned seven hundred dollars. I don't know where seven dollar, hundred dollars.
He was looking at a sheet, and it looks like seven hundred bucks. I said, I have no idea.
It's a, it's not a new building. I mean, you know, it's, it's an existing space, so.
Make it equitable for them. I don't care how you do it.
Yeah, I mean, I see a zoning exemption.
They use the El hombre as the thing, so unless there's a new sign with a gigantic change, there probably isn't gonna be anything for Jennifers. The office space will probably have the regular. The office space will probably have the regular occupancy to just make that a new space.
Yeah, I see, like, a zoning exemption, because they're not expanding the space, they're building out an existing space, so, you know, you don't have to pay, pay again for something that's already been, you know, it's a fifty dollar zoning exemption, and then, and then, you know, an occupancy, and if she does a, if they do a sign, we'll have to deal with that, you know, because, you know, it's, it's a little bit of a architectural design issue with doing a sign on that building just the way that it is set up. There is a, you know, a multi-tenant sign in the front, which is kinda maxed out, but there might be an opportunity to co-locate another sign on there, but I'd have to see how the, the code reads, I mean, there's a, you know, we react to what's being proposed, and if there's, you know, nothing being proposed, then I can mention opportunities, but, you know, they would have to be open to that, too, and we're open to discovery and what can be done.
But, I say, when you, I don't think it should be permit free, but I just think you should make it so it makes sense, so it's not like something new coming in, and, you know, it's somebody that's been contributing to this village for years over here, wants to move there, let's make it sure it's attractive for them to do that.
I'm just down to the five hundred fifty and one fifty.
All right.
Sounds good.
All right, very good. All right, zoning inspectors report, John, anything of note?
I mean, uh? He's pretty much, um, you know, we've, we've got some outstanding, uh, occupancies for the residents, um, that were applied for, and working with the village engineer to get the final grading, uh, report in, but all documents on our end have been sent to the village engineer. And we just got a, an application in Woodsong for a new house today, so hopefully we'll get that permit out tomorrow. We got it done pretty fast, so. And then, in regards to, we're pretty much closing out the year on, on violation notices, and the ones that are in purple as well as black are gonna transfer over to this year, and then, you know, we'll just be working directly to get those taken care of when, when the weather gets better, so. And then, you know, the dirty siding stuff, we, we had some success last year in getting that stuff done, and there's just two, two remaining, so.
Okay.
I tried to use my enforce, enforcement skills and, but also, you know, given the times and what we're dealing with, keeping everybody healthy.
Right.
Also be accommodating to, you know, I, I really want, like to get some dialogue with them and, you know, work on timelines and?
Right.
You know, render any technical assistance that I could provide.
Yeah, we're not trying to be the Gestapo here, we're just trying to keep the village clean and nice looking and?
Correct.
Working with people is certainly fine.
Yeah, extend the hand versus, you know, any other?
Club.
Correct.
Where are we on Fridge's?
Yeah, that, that, that property falls in and out of compliance, I think what we need, they need a letter from?
It's falling out of it, I thought we had something to put some teeth in it, to really slam it with a phone.
Yeah, yeah, the, a letter from the prosecutor, I'm not even gonna write them anything, I'm just?
Was it on its way?
It isn't, but it can be. Okay.
Like somebody backed up with a dump truck and dumped it in the front yard of there.
It, it's a mess, it really is, and it, you know, they have a structure out back that's kinda caved in and stuff, and it's just really bad.
Hey, I just had a text from Jim Lindberg, he and Carissa were both on the Zoom call, so he was just saying, like, you know, how are we gonna communicate the months going forward, it was, we try to figure out, so I know council this coming Thursday, we just decided to go virtual, but are we gonna kinda just work it month by month and see what we're doing, or?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'll just let them know, we'll contact everybody prior to the next meeting and let them?
Probably oughta send a separate email, just not probably done that the meeting is virtual or, you know?
Yeah, sorry, I couldn't start, I didn't see on there, did it say it was virtual?
It says up right on the agenda.
It was virtual?
It's right at the top of the agenda, it says, in person for members.
In person for members and via Zoom teleconference for the public.
Yeah, so if you happen to read that, because I don't always necessarily read that, but yeah, I mean, just an email before all the meetings with a heads up would be good. So, yeah, they both were.
I'll start sending out reminders. Yeah, right now on Zoom, I'm just streaming the, um, regular box caister.
Okay. Very good.
Leslie?
All right, anybody else, got anything for the commission?
Ann from Maple Leaf said, I tried to listen to planning commission meeting on the phone, heard John start to talk, then got, got sound, got cut off. I'll try to follow up later this week.
I'll send her the link.
All right, I'm trying to talk into mine.
Tom, you actually have to lean into your mic, like if you're being, no, like you have to turn it on.
Especially with the mask on.
Yeah.
You're not on.
Not on.
Yeah, but I'm pushing the button.
No, you just push it once.
Let it up.
You gotta let it up.
Gotta stand tall.
Oh.
Yeah, now you're on.
You have the little top hat that says on and the little squishy hat that says off.
It would, it would be nice if you could just hold it when you're talking.
Yeah.
Because I get, my, it's like?
I just leave mine on all the time and lean.
Sorry.
So I'm gonna swear and then I go?
I, I assumed you were off unless you wanted to talk.
Yeah. I just left mine on, there's a lot of chatters and pausing, but?
Push to talk, not push to?
Yeah.
All right, uh, anything else, anybody? I think we're good. I don't know if that, I'm just looking at something on my calendar here real quick.
I'm guaranteed to be off the whole time.
Yep.
This says next meeting is February eighth, it's actually February ninth, just to be clear. I mean, not that?
So he's looking at the two thousand twenty calendar?
Twenty twenty calendar, yeah.
Um, all right, uh, nothing else, we'll motion to adjourn. All, all in favor? Aye. All right, good night, thank you, everybody.
Pretty good. It's on delay.
That may be your home, your, uh?
So did Jim hear the whole meeting?
Uh-huh.
Scott?
I don't know if he was listening or not, I know they were on Zoom.
I only got it shared like halfway through.
Yeah, I don't know.
Ann couldn't have heard?
She could have, she could.
So you only had it shared halfway through?
I don't know the exact minute, I'll have to check the recording and see what minute it came in, but the entire thing is on the Village of, the Milifford, Ohio YouTube channel, like, all you have to do is press play, it's actually still going.
You know, back to Olmwood's thing, I really do like that PUD concept better than leaving it zoned the way it is now, because you never know if something could down the road fall through and we end up with something that is real mishmash on that corner. That's a really important corner.
And it's, it's, it's bad to have a general commercial with a bunch of non-performing residences on it, so if he's gonna develop it residentially, we really oughta get that out of G C anyway. So that's, that's a good development.
Yeah, nicely laid out site with, uh, open space, could be very nice.
And if we, if he wants to put some kind of rec center or something on there, we'll give him a variance, or I'd, I'd rather do it that way.
I think it's, it's kinda like a, like a Dell Web thing, that's how they do it, I mean, they've got five?